Commissioner Chair Clark, thanks. I have one request to the agenda. You got just a second?
You mean an adjustment to it?
Yes, I want to drop seven C.
Okay, once you, when we ask for adjustments, bring it up then, okay?
Okay, just want to make sure. Thanks.
Or I'll, when I move the agenda, I'll just move it less seven C. How's that? Make it a little easier.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I have eight thirty. I'm going to call it a ward of the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one Hancock County Commissioners Special Meeting Order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm going to move to adopt the agenda as presented with the exception of removing item seven C.
Motion made. I'll hear it seconded. Second that. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambach?
Yes.
Commissioner Peretti?
Yes.
And I am myself. Motion carries. We'll move on to item one. This is a discussion regarding a resolution to ask the sheriff to resign. Commissioner Wambach, based upon your comments at the last meeting, do you have a motion with regards to this agenda item?
I move that the Hancock County Commissioners ask for Sheriff Kane's resignation for his handling of the recovery coaching program with Healthy Acadia.
I'm going to second that for discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to ask the sheriff to resign as a result of his, how he handled the recovery coaching. Based upon that motion, Commissioner Wambach, do you have a comment?
Yes. It's a sad day for me. All this time and energy, and we're right back at the same spot we were seven months ago. Healthy Acadia is back, doing a job. Everyone admitted they do well. It is what it is. I hate that phrase. Tosses away any responsibility to act. So I'll tell you what it is. It's the sheriff's obligation to the inmates to provide services, and he failed that obligation. It's about exposing the county to questions of quality, quality of care that could have future ramifications. I'll tell you what it is. It's walking away from the financial support Healthy Acadia provide the sheriff's department for programs that keep the county safe. It's the fact the sheriff didn't make the entire commission aware of his intention of canceling the contract. And no, Commissioner Clark, you are not the entire commission, just one third of it. I'll tell you what it is. It's that no replacement was in place when the contract was terminated, and it took seven months and a public outcry to restore it. From what I can tell, everyone knew that this would end badly, and that's why there was so much silence among the parties, from the sheriff to the chairman, myself, and even Healthy Acadia. So again, here we are. The inevitable, just delayed by seven months. It's an embarrassment that the full commission was not given the opportunity to address this before the contract was ended.
Volume level ninety-eight.
I have apologized for my part in not moving the problem forward after Healthy Acadia declined to have the commissioners intervene. The chair should acknowledge his role in keeping the sheriff's intention to end the contract to himself. This was never a situation that was just going to go away. And if it had been dealt with at the time, yes, we would have had hundreds of emails and enormous Zoom calls, but it would have gotten resolved in July. So yes, I think the sheriff should resign. That's it.
Commissioner Peretti, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do, and I'm going to stay out of the politics of this.
Alert audio now unmuted.
To me, the sheriff is elected by the citizens of Hancock County, just like we are. So he's an elected official, just like us. State statute prevents us from hiring, firing, or disciplining the sheriff. I feel strongly that the county commission asking him to resign is an attempt to do just that. It's disciplining him, which again, state statute prevents us from doing. So for that reason, I know I seconded this motion for discussion, but I will not support any action by the commission to ask a duly elected sheriff to resign. I just think it's improper, and I won't do it.
Thank you. If the elected department head was involved in some sort of misconduct so significant that it met the criteria for impeachment, I wouldn't have a problem giving them the opportunity to resign before I asked the governor to remove them from office. Folks, I can tell you from personal experience that no matter how egregious you believe the sheriff's was in removing Healthy Acadia from the jail's recovery coaching that led to some seven months lack of services, and how upset you may be at the comments regarding Black Lives Matter, they don't come even close to the threshold of meeting the standard for removal. Now, I've known the governor Janet Mills for several years. I've worked with her a few times on law enforcement matters. If I sent a letter to the governor briefly outlining what the sheriff has done and asked her if it met the criteria for an investigation, she wouldn't even bother sending me a letter. She'd call me on the phone and ask me what I'd been smoking. So and so, I simply ask you, if the sheriff's conduct does not meet the level necessary for involuntary removal, why should I ask him for his voluntary removal? Additionally, if the sheriff did resign, he'd be replaced by a person selected by a political group and not by the voters. The process here calls for the Republican Party to nominate a person who the governor would appoint to fulfill the remainder of the term. I prefer to take the position that I'd rather deal with the devil I know. County officials, unlike municipal leaders, are in a unique situation with regards to those under their managing our departments in that half of them are elected and not appointed. So for those managers, we cannot hire, fire, discipline, suspend, or remove from office. So the best way to manage is for us to work with them in harmony and goodwill, and asking for the resignations does little to promote good relations. No, I am not going to ask Scott Kane to resign as sheriff of Hancock County. Sheriff, do you have a comment you would like to make?
I don't, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. I read my statement at the meeting on the second. I stand behind that, and at this time, I don't have any more comments. I suspect sometime in the future that I will clarify a few things that have not come out at this meeting, but no, I don't have a comment. Thank you for the offer.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public for comment. Rebecca, what is the process we're going to use this morning to select one order?
So I think what we'll do is if you would send me a message in the chat, I can compile a list of names that way, and we'll try to go through it in as orderly a fashion as possible. Alternatively, you can raise your hand. I see Rebecca went with her hand raised and would like to make a comment. So we will try to handle it that way, if that makes sense.
Meeting tools, closed chat panel, alert from Rebecca Wentworth.
And if you would mute, if you're not speaking, if you would mute, that would be great. Thanks.
I'd just also like to clarify that, as I understand it, where this is public comment and not questions and answers, where we're going to be commenting. Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
Well, this is really a hybrid of, we have a motion on the floor, and we're giving the public an opportunity to comment on that motion. But this is also the public comment section, which means basically everybody has an opportunity to speak once, but we would like to see that when they speak on, they speak, that it deals with the elements of the motion that's on the floor. Obviously, if somebody has commented, like to make independent of this issue later, we will make time for them. But the comments now should be relevant to the motion on the floor, and that is to a resolution to ask the sheriff to resign.
So any comments that a commissioner would have, probably would be better served waiting till the end, right before we take a vote on the item.
Right. I think that's what I'd like to do, is the public to comment, and then it's up to each individual commissioner on whether or not they want to respond.
Alert audio now unmuted.
Rebecca, do you know what that is?
Yes, it's a participant who doesn't have his, who is not muted.
Okay, please, once again, folks, if you're not speaking, please mute so that you don't interfere with whoever is speaking. While Becker is, Rebecca is getting that list together, I'm going to recognize Rebecca Wentworth. Rebecca, if you'd start first so that we can get this started, and Rebecca will come back with a list after you speak, okay?
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me this time to talk. I am very saddened by the atmosphere of confrontation and opposition that has developed in this body. I hate to see these sides of commissioners drawn up, and I would wish you to find some way to reach across your oppositions and find a way to understand each other and come to some positive conclusion, rather than just taking a hard standing. This has come up because of attitudes and beliefs. This is a problem that is ongoing and has been ongoing since I started my candidacy, as I watched the commissioners in this room. So I would hope that you would turn to the duties of the commissioners in your, on your page. Six A says, "Adopt an ethics policy governing the conduct of elected and appointed county officials." This clearly gives the commissioners duties to create a positive atmosphere for our county residents to exist with each other. And if you guys are going to be fighting with each other and not coming there over something that is so blatantly wrong, then the county itself will descend into parties and into sides and create a very bad atmosphere in this county, which may already exist, but I won't go into that. So the very atmosphere of this governing body needs to change. And for that, with that comment, I would like to say that we need to institute a permanent ability for the public to contact these public meetings and be part of these public meetings. Like the Ellsworth City Council has a streaming service that will continue on beyond the COVID times. I've heard more than once people in this body say that they can't wait to get back to when things are normal, meaning that the public will no longer be able to come on in great numbers, because that little room certainly will not house great numbers. So that's all I have to say. And although I have a radish strident tone of voice this morning, my real wish is that we all come together in love and peace. I really, really desire that the most. So thank you for letting me talk, and I hope to enjoy other people's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Brett Chikatelli?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Great. So what you could tell you that in Hancock, I appreciate you guys having this conversation today. I just want to start by saying I support this resolution to the commissioners to ask Scott Kane to resign as our sheriff, although I believe this is only the first step. If he does not resign on his own, which would be the appropriate thing to do, then the commissioners must use their power and remain law. The statute passed by our legislature to recommend the governor remove Scott Kane from his position. Now, counter to what Chairman Clark just stated, if you read the full statute, so here's the full statute. Title thirty A, Municipals and Counties, Part One, Counties, Chapter One, County Officers, Subchapter Six, Sheriffs and Officers, Article Seven, Removal of Sheriff. Four, four, one, removal of sheriff. This is the full statute. Whenever the county commissioners find the sheriff is not faithfully or effectively performing any duty imposed by this chapter or the sheriff is improperly exercising or acting outside the sheriff's authority, the commissioners may file a complaint with the governor describing in detail the facts of those actions or omissions and request from the governor to remove the sheriff from office and appoint another sheriff in that office for the remainder of the term. You'll see there's nothing in there about impeachment or different criteria that the chairman outlined. I want to continue my statement here. Scott Kane, through his racially motivated and ignorant statements about the Black Lives Matter movement, his cruel withholding of recovery coaching services to residents of our community in need, his failure to apologize for his actions, and his inability to offer concrete steps to heal the harm he has caused our community has demonstrated he lacks the skills needed to lead our sheriff's department. Leaders need to be thoughtful, empathetic, and open to knowing when they are wrong. Kane has shown he lacks these traits. I attempted to work with Scott Kane this summer with other citizens, desperate for dialogue with him to help make our community safer and more compassionate. We met with constant pushback. No one, we were told, has authority over the sheriff. No one can tell Scott Kane what to do. This is wrong. You can remove this man from his office and help make Hancock County safer. No citizen should have to fear retribution for speaking their minds and supporting ideas that differ from Scott Kane's or any other public official. Thank you for considering this issue, and please support Scott Kane's resignation and ultimate removal from his office. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
Video container, pane, alert, you are muted. Press Alt plus H to unmute your microphone, or press and hold the space key.
Can you hear me?
Now unmuted.
Thank you. Larry Lockman and Bradley, I just wanted to put this in context chronologically. It was on May tenth that Healthy Acadia made this statement endorsing Black Lives Matter. Inexplicably, this, ten days before they made that blanket endorsement of Black Lives Matter, there was a riot in Portland, Maine, that was organized by the local chapter of Black Lives Matter. Quoting now from the police report on that riot, "Several hundred protesters attacked police barricades and attempted to damage police cruisers that had been positioned at intersections. Police were pelted with glass bottles and rocks as protesters swarmed the cruisers and threatened to kill the cops. Over the next hour, the violence escalated. The mob hurled rocks, bricks, and bottles of urine at the police. The Urban Outfitters store at one eighty-eight Middle Street was broken into and looted by a large group just after nine P M. More burglaries were committed to three other businesses. A dozen or so other businesses had windows smashed and graffiti spray painted on their storefronts." So that's the context. Ten days later, Healthy Acadia decides to issue a blanket endorsement of Black Lives Matter. I want to quote to you from the email correspondence between Elsie Flemings and Sheriff Kane in the aftermath. On Tuesday, June sixteenth, Sheriff Kane wrote to Elsie saying, "I have spent a great deal of time thinking about the post Healthy Acadia made in regards to Black Lives Matter. I have to weigh your right to decide who you do and don't align with in your organization. As of today, some of the language and terms used on your website that offended me are still there. I am not a racist and will not tolerate the earth that at the Hancock County Sheriff's Office. I also will not align with an organization that supports a racist, anti-law enforcement, violent group such as Black Lives Matter." On June twenty-third, Ms. Flemings responded, "We cannot express to you how deeply sorry we are for the post, for the pain and anger our statement has caused for the sheriff's offices. We truly did not want to alienate you or represent a position contrary to law enforcement, and we are devastated that this misunderstanding has caused a break in our important partnerships. We can only begin to understand how challenging it must be to experience negative public perceptions of law enforcement in light of the sacrifice you all make daily to protect the public. We deeply appreciate your service and dedication. In light of these facts, there is absolutely no reason for Sheriff Kane to resign. There is no grounds for the commissioners asking him to resign. I would say the person who needs to resign is Elsie Flemings, and the Board of Directors..."
Okay, Larry, Larry.
"...are to be doing that.
Larry, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Yes, Joanna Chase?
Oops, here we go. Historically, every time African Americans and people of color have demanded their civil rights to be granted the same rights as white citizens and have those rights protected, they have been met with terror and suppression. They have had those movements infiltrated, and other elements have tried to discredit them by creating havoc and destruction. Thus, we have the KKK, we have the FBI assassinations of civil rights leaders, we have the Proud Boys today, and other armed white supremacist groups that we have heard too much about. Calling Black Lives Matter terrorists is just another attempt to stop this movement for civil rights. This history is important. It is not abstract or disconnected from our daily lives. Black Lives Matter has ignited a powerful movement of Americans, white and black, to finally honestly confront and put to test this cancer of racial hatred. It exists in every corner of our country. This will not happen without every person and every organization examining their own actions and beliefs in regards to racial justice. We and they are responsible and must hold ourselves and our public and private agencies accountable. This is not an easy process, and it's going to be traumatic for many of us. The main chiefs of police association, the main sheriff's association, and the main prosecutor's association put out a statement on June third pledging, and I paraphrase, "To eliminate police cultures that condone social injustices, to enhance training such as implicit bias, and to guarantee equal justice to every main resident, change starts with us." Removing Sheriff Kane from his position would be an obvious start. I don't know the man personally, and I don't doubt that he has done some good work during his tenure, but that does not erase that his racial bias has been obvious in his actions and statements. His attempt to characterize the civil rights organization Black Lives Matter as terrorist and unilateral cancellation of the Healthy Acadia contract, his attempt to purchase riot gear for his deputies, which would be laughable if it weren't so sinister, and his failure to pursue, identify, and hold accountable those responsible for the noose on Dear Isle, a very deliberate hate crime in every sense of the word. Scott Kane's actions unfortunately prove Black Lives Matter's accusation that individuals exercising racism..."
Thank you very, ma'am. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Rebecca, who's next?
Joe Cooper.
Well, I don't have prepared remarks, but I do have several things, points I'd like to make. I do not agree with this effort to have Sheriff Kane resign. I don't feel that is the solution, and if I were, if I were in charge, as I am in my own town as a selectman, I would be very reluctant to remove somebody from personnel that is doing, has a lot to offer. And I do agree, and my first step on this, I'll give a little background, but I have, I am a selectman in Lemoine. I have served on the county budget committee for many terms. It's been a learning experience, and I can't even pretend that I understand all the statutes. I've been very impressed with the work of the county, and I'm very impressed with this effort to allow people to speak. It's a very different setting than we usually have, and it was well handled. However, like everyone, when I heard of this and when I read it in the paper, I was very distressed personally. And I have four adopted children. I wouldn't even pretend, wouldn't even pretend to understand what their lives are like, and that's taken me a long time. But Sheriff Kane has been fabulous with them, worked with them in the DARE program. They, but you can do all kinds of things and look good. I'm not pretending any of that this is the reason, but I see a quality work, and I feel that unless we talk and set up a new system, we're not making any damn changes. We talk about trying to change systemic racism. Let's start working with the system. Why not, why not do that? My first step on this with another fellow selectman was to reach out to Sheriff Kane personally and to ask him questions. I did feel a lot better after I'd spoken to him. I'm still, of course, upset. He has acknowledged mistakes, but I think we need to go on, not to dismiss this, but to take the opportunity to improve the lives of all of us in Hancock County, working with someone who's completely dedicated. Public safety is not, not a simple thing. And I'm not, I'm one of those middle-of-the-road Democrats. I'm not, you know, being gonna go and march in the streets about police lives matter, or probably not at this point with Black Lives Matter. I support my kids. I support a lot of different things, but I am not thinking that this is going to solve anything to march around. We need to talk to each other, and we need to set up some kind of...
Joe, thank you very much for the comments. Rebecca?
Yes, David Weida.
Does anybody see David?
He was not here earlier. Are you muted, Mr. Weida?
It just popped up that he left.
Oh, okay.
Well, he may be back. Okay, how about Adrian Calvo?
Yes, hi. I'm just wondering, has anyone done any type of investigating as to the damages that have been incurred in the past seven months? Like, have there been any deaths because of the cancellation of services? Have there been any overdoses? Have there been unnecessary pain? Have there been unnecessary pain and suffering? So I think until that investigation is done, you can't really say that there aren't egregious damages or repercussions from that action. And once again, we're talking about services removed from a remote party or group of people, you know, those in recovery for the actions of, you know, a not-for-profit agency supporting, you know, a cause that has both many peaceful protesters and many of the riots were white ring extremists infiltrating their cause. So I'll just end with that, you know? Please, you know, keep in mind in this decision, any damages that were incurred, you know, where any of the bodies that floated up of adolescents in the river, you know, a victim of this action. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Nadine Lewis.
Hi, I was trying to write down all my points. I'm sorry. Thanks for letting us speak today. I've got to say that I am very disappointed that we've come to this point. I was shocked when I saw this in the paper. I've known Scott Kane for a long time. He did DARE with my kids, so I know he's committed to, to recovery, okay? And I thank you for that, Scott. I don't think he should be removed, but I think that, that he needs to, everyone here needs to have, all the people that are guilty, need to take a hard look at your behavior. You are here to serve the people of Hancock County. And to hide stuff. Thank you, John Wambacher, for bringing this to the front and having a backbone to say to the people that you serve that you guys need to take responsibility. That's the bottom line. You are here to serve us, and we appreciate your service, but you have to be transparent. So I hope we can come to a place where we can resolve this. We have to. I myself am in recovery, and I know how important it is. I, my, well, I guess I can't ask questions, but I don't, I'm late to coming to this, that, you know, are there people in the, in the, in the jail to serve people in recovery? Because you've got to remember something. Those people are coming back out. They're coming back out, and they're gonna be on our streets and in our communities. So you guys all need to think about this. Thank you for having the opportunity, giving me the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
David Weida, I think he is back in the meeting.
I am back. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to first state my support of the resolution as introduced by Commissioner Wambacher. After attending the meeting two weeks ago and hearing the sheriff's statements, I've had two weeks now to reflect on the fact that this situation is now in front of us that has to be addressed, and we do not operate or live in a vacuum. What we do in Hancock County around this particular issue will reverberate and be witnessed and be a part of our history. I have been a human rights advocate and social justice advocate for my entire adult life, so I'm, I'm 62. Forty years ago, I began realizing that marginalized people in our culture had to be given a fair chance to live in the society we get, that we create together. And on my part, that has demanded participation as a street activist, as a political activist, as a meeting attender, as a person who gives testimony at every opportunity for the importance of realizing the work that we have to do towards that better, future world that we all, I hope, desire. My comments will be kept to the, the notion that has been suggested by Commissioner Clark, but I would like to simply say that I support the statements made by Rebecca Wentworth, Scott Chicoletti, Joanna Chase. I was appalled by the statements from Larry Lockman, and I would like to have some way of discovering how he was given access to what I assumed were private emails between Elsie Flemings and Scott Kane. There's a strange atmosphere when somebody as a citizen comes into a meeting such as this and starts quoting statements that were made in private emails between a county-elected official and a representative of an agency that they are in dialogue with. There's a problem there. I would like to have the commissioners address in their later comments how we as citizens could pursue the removal of Sheriff Kane from the office if indeed the commissioners feel that they are not going to do that after today's statements. I would like to organize the other folks in this meeting, away from this meeting, as to what we can do as citizens who want to represent our case to Governor Mills, who is a friend of mine, and I'm surprised that Commissioner Clark would have stated his assumption.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. We are not terrorists.
Rebecca?
Yes, Charles Stevens.
Yes, thank you. This is the Reverend Charles Stevens. I served as a parish pastor in Ellsworth and Hancock County in the 80s and have retired back here and now as a 72-year-old retired minister. I support Commissioner Wambacher's position. I feel like Sheriff Kane abused his power based on emotionalism, his emotionalism and inaccurate information and personal beliefs. He's caused unnecessary suffering to those who are incarcerated without any treatment for alcoholism or drug addiction, and he has caused potential harm to the residents of our county because those people who've been in prison, in jail, without counseling will return, and if they're still addicted, will have to be dealing with that in the public. I think that calling Black Lives Matter a terrorist organization is like calling the Republican Party a terrorist organization because of all the Trump Republicans who were involved in the insurrection in Washington DC on January 6th. That's ridiculous. I know that Republicans are not a terrorist organization. I also know that Black Lives Matter is not a terrorist organization. I've marched with them in Ellsworth during protests. We applauded the police officers who were standing on the Ellsworth City Hall steps. We appreciated their assistance as we walked down the street. There were no terrorists in the Black Lives Matter organization in Hancock County that marched in Ellsworth. We demand that black lives matter as much as everybody else's lives matter, just like the blue lives mattered in Washington DC when they were beaten and one was killed by the Trump mob. I rest my case, and I wish that the commissioners would take this seriously.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Jessica Valdez.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd also like to thank commissioners for your comments acknowledging that asking the sheriff to resign would be outside of the authority of the committee. I'm here today in support of Sheriff Scott Kane, and I'm in absolute awe of the audacity of even considering a duly effective official to resign when no crime by that official has been committed. We, the people of Hancock County, have spoken and elected Sheriff Kane twice because we believe in him and his leadership and decision-making. We believe he has the knowledge and the wisdom to make choices for our law enforcement officers and facilities that are in the best interest of this community. We may not agree with every decision that he makes, but every day, we have elected him to lead and make informed and thoughtful decisions, which he has this decision included due to the violence and the climate at the time of this decision. I've had the privilege to be able to provide support and services to people who are incarcerated in the Hancock County jail and seen firsthand how the sheriff and his staff worked tirelessly and frankly with little to no thanks to help improve the circumstances of the people in the jail. A more compassionate group of people I don't think you could find, especially when you consider that they work with such a challenging population. Though a service that could be useful to some was suspended, it didn't mean that every other support was cut off, nor with the search for replacement not at the top of the priority list. In fact, many professional-level supports are in the jail and continue to be in the jail. Working in the jail is not a comfortable experience. It's anxiety-provoking at best, and until we walk in the footsteps of the law enforcement who spend their days in this environment, how dare any of us presume to know what is necessary to keep them safe and make them feel supported to the men, then but the men and women who go there every day and work and put their lives on the line for your family and mine and the population that is there trying to help them. Asking a man who has done nothing but try and keep our community safe and providing a supportive workplace for the people who do that for us every day is wrong. We have a mechanism in place to remove elected officials that we do not agree with, and we are blessed to exercise it every November. Pressuring a duly elected official to resign when they have not committed a crime, even if we don't agree with them, is a dangerous slippery slope that I dare say could come back to haunt any elected official. For any elected official who is disagreed with could be pressured to resign. Leave this matter to the people, for we will speak with the power of our votes and our voices behind them. Thank you for all you do, Scott.
Thank you.
Hey, Jacque Noel Taylor.
Hello. My name is Jacque Noel Taylor, and I wanted to speak in support of this resolution. It distresses me that because of a personal feeling about a specific situation that in an abuse of the power, that he affected people who really need help. This idea that our law enforcement have the ultimate power, have the ultimate power, would act out of so much fear or so much resentment, I think is frightening. As an African-American man living in this community, it is frightening to know that our sheriff makes decisions that are such, at such a base level that he's unable to separate emotion from his duty as a sheriff. It is frightening to me that the ultimate authority, who are our law enforcement, has such a narrow vision. So that is why I support this resolution. I do wish that there was a way that I could say, we could just work on this, but I don't know. I don't, I didn't see the dialogue happening that necessarily. We always say this, but then nothing ever happened, nothing ever happened. So I strongly support this.
I'm sorry, your, your audio is getting so bad that we can't understand you. So we're gonna have to move on to the next speaker. Rebecca?
Yes, solidarity Bucksport, can you have a comment?
Hi, yes. My name is Derek Cole, just logged in with a little grassroots group that we formed in Bucksport here to conduct Black Lives Matter demonstrations. We meet every Saturday in Bucksport from 12:30 to 1:30, right here in town, and, you know, we've had a lot of love from Hancock County, people driving by honking. And I would hate to think that all of those supporters are terrorists and Marxists and whatever the political slant is that is being put against us. You know, I'm gonna kind of just turn to the opioid crisis. I'm not gonna sit here and cite numbers. I'm gonna tell you that I've lost many loved ones, and I think probably everyone in this meeting has lost loved ones. To think that someone struggling with addiction could be sitting in prison without, you know, the proper rehabilitation programs is disgusting. It's not only a local problem, it is a national problem. And to see the optics of this playing out, that we were doing a good job of that, we had Healthy Acadia in there, and then they were removed for supporting black lives, it makes me want to cry. I am shaking. This is just absolutely insane, and I think that no matter what side of this you are on, we are all smart enough to know that this decision was made based off of a personal opinion. Sheriff Kane mentioned that law enforcement is under a microscope. They are. Commissioners, you are under a microscope. Waiters at restaurants handing you your food, they are under a microscope. Everybody is under a microscope in their job, in their work. We all know this. Also, off-topic here, I'm really disturbed that emails were cited between Kane and Elsie Fleming, who I believe is the director of Healthy Acadia. If this is public information, I would urge that the commissioners make some sort of statement on that and release those emails for all to see. I really don't understand how a citizen can get their hands on those emails unless, you know, someone involved in that correspondence forwarded that to him. That's all. Thank you so much, commissioners, for taking this seriously, and I really hope this conversation doesn't end here today.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yes, Molly Friedland.
I agree that this, this whole situation has come about due to discrimination, but I also wanted to touch back and echo a lot of what others are saying about the general opioid problem and that substance abuse disorder is a bipartisan issue, and that, in fact, how Sheriff Kane was elected through all of his community ties has a lot to do with his educating the community in our county through the DARE programming. So I just want to kind of bring up this irony and bring up how quickly it seems that Sheriff Kane would sort of step backwards against everything that he spent a really long time teaching our youth and our parents and our entire county so quickly to take that, the opportunity away from the incarcerated population for support just because of his emotional and obviously racial bias. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce.
Thank you very much for the respectful and orderly way you're taking our comments. I really appreciate it. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about the rift developing in our community fabric, and I want us to re-weave it. I want everyone, including law enforcement, to feel protected, safe, and accepted for their beliefs. In the book My Grandmother's Hands, written by a black therapist who provides training for law enforcement and whose brother is a cop, it becomes clear that there is trauma in police bodies, white bodies, and black and brown bodies, and we all need healing. I truly hope the commissioners will use their leadership to find a way to mediate this conflict and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I do. Jared Gordon.
Good morning. I've got a couple of comments in support of the sheriff. Keep it short and sweet. You know, I've been a community member, Blue Hill Peninsula area, for a long time. The sheriff has always treated everybody in that area with the utmost respect. He's a man of character. He did the DARE program for many, many years, always has been supportive of people with substance abuse issues. You know, I couldn't think of a, of a better guy to be representing our community. Everybody has a right to their own opinion, but I, you know, I support the sheriff in every way I could, and that's all for today. Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer Lipka.
Hi, sorry. Hopefully you can hear me. I am a local physician, and I would like to throw my support behind the resolution. I came to this mostly because it is very... I came to this mostly because it is very disheartening to me in terms of being a physician who sees the health effects and multiple community effects of addiction, that a message was sent that a vulnerable group of people could become victim to personal political opinion based on emotion. And it sort of carries over to my question of if every vulnerable population is a potential victim of a person's political opinion, to the point where I have even asked, you know, am I safe in this community? Am I represented in this community? If I ever need law enforcement in this county, will I be discriminated against based on my political opinions? And I think there are a lot of people who do feel like they are no longer a part of, you know, I've heard that Sheriff Kane serves our family and our community, and, you know, I am left wondering if I am a part of that community on the basis of political beliefs that differ. But again, I'm coming to this mostly because the opioid crisis in the state of Maine is something that needs to be taken seriously to a point where things like this, political opinions, do not affect the services that are provided. It is a very devastating thing for this state, and so therefore I do support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Anna Durin.
Thank you for having us speak today. As I had called in two weeks ago to say that I supported the resignation of the sheriff, and I support the resolution that's been made today, I can see that without, you know, two out of three of the commissioners not supporting the resolution, I can see that it probably isn't going anywhere. I would like to address, look beyond to address the bigger picture as well. Jessica Valdez mentioned that the sheriff's office works to keep our community safe. Our community includes people of color who also need to feel safe from violence by our law enforcement. I'd like to see the commissioners adopt a resolution to require anti-racist training for themselves and all levels of the sheriff's office. The town of Far Harbor recently head out several members of our council, attended training offered by a group called Racial Equity Institute. They provided thousands, training for thousands of law enforcement personnel all over the country, of the community leaders, nonprofit organizations, and countless many people. If not this group, then, you know, there's many other groups that can provide these trainings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is everyone on my list. Have I missed anyone?
Jax, there was a gentleman that didn't have his audio working. Would he like to try that again? Is he still with us?
He is, Mr. Taylor.
Taylor, how are you making out with your audio?
Okay, let's see if, is that any better?
Oh, much better. Go ahead, try it again.
Okay, and you might hear my little one chirp up. Sorry about that. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my support for the resolution. Simply because with the power that sheriff has, it's really important that everyone feel like they are protected under the law. And the fact that he would, he made such an impulsive decision to punish an organization that was servicing people who have great tremendous need, that is, that is very problematic, and it is scary to me as a member of the community that with that much power, with that much power, that is how he chose to use it. And that is something that will bleed into the culture for all of his officers in the department, and it's for those reasons I really strongly support this resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you.
We have one more. Jay A. sent me a message.
Hi, that's me. Thank you. If this conversation is coming to a close, I just, I want to thank everybody who spoke today. I really believe in this forum for coming together as a community and voicing what concerns we have for our collective good, and I really appreciate this time. I would like to call attention to the fact that the question here is not whether or not Sheriff Kane is a nice man, or even whether he's done good things as a sheriff. I think we, what we should be concerned with is what mechanisms are in place to keep this type of harm from happening, and how do we address the harm that has been done? That's a restorative framework, right? Who are the parties involved? And how do we heal from the harm that's been done? And moving forward, whether or not the commissioners support this resolution, how do we keep this from happening? I work in a school union that put out a statement last June affirming that Black Lives Matter, and my concern as a citizen is whether or not our schools would keep receiving support for affirming that. I really, I encourage the commissioners to approach this from a restorative framework and to consider ways to increase transparency and increase community participation in the way that laws are enforced in our county. I really think that's in everyone's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Jolly would like to make a statement.
Thank you very much, and I want to start by thanking John Wambacher for putting forth his proposal. Two weeks ago, at the commissioners' meeting, I said that I thought that Sheriff Kane had exhibited a failure of leadership on several levels, and in an op-ed that I wrote, I called, not an op-ed, a letter to the editor, excuse me, I called for Kane's resignation. I still think that Sheriff Kane has shown a failure of leadership in several regards. First of all, a leader admits his mistakes and apologizes. And Sheriff Kane made a mistake to characterize Black Lives Matter as a terrorist organization, and it was a mistake to criticize and discredit Healthy Acacia for its statement of support for Black Lives Matter. And it was a mistake, most of all, to deny recovery coaching services to the inmates of the Hancock County Jail for more than six months. And Sheriff Kane's weak and vague statement two weeks ago does not constitute an apology or recognition of those mistakes. A leader also listens to his constituents, and two weeks ago, what did Sheriff Kane do? He left the commissioners' meeting as soon as he had read his statement. He didn't stay to hear any of the public comments, and I appreciate the fact that he is here today, but that was a failure of leadership as well. Despite these failures of leadership, I'm not sure that I think it's best for Sheriff Kane to resign anymore. I don't think it's going to help us cross the deep divide that has developed in this community over this issue and others. It's not going to do anything to reunite us. And I honestly am not sure what the best path forward is at this point, but it certainly should include an apology from Sheriff Kane for the mistakes he's made. And I think it should include anti-racist training for the sheriff department and other law enforcement departments in Hancock County. And then some sort of mechanism that would provide an opportunity for members of the community to regularly dialogue with Sheriff Kane and other law enforcement officials in Hancock County that would move us forward, move us towards resolution of some of these issues, move us towards greater understanding of what it is that divides us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all that I have on the list. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Okay, hearing none. Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further comment from the commissioners with regards to the motion before I call for a vote?
I'd just like to address two points quickly. First is, there are no private emails to or from public officials. They're subject to the Maine's right to know laws, and anyone can make a request to have those types of documents. So if you want to see those types of documents, file a FOIA request, and you will receive them. Second is, we're not fighting among each other on the commission. I've been here less than two months, I think this is my fourth meeting, and I find that we work extremely well together. We might disagree or come from different points of view, but we work together, and I value that. That's why there's three of us. We're not all going to have the same point of view, but we can and do work well together.
Any further comment? Hearing none, I'm going to call a vote on the issue. Commissioner Wambacher, how do you vote on this motion? You're going to unmute, Commissioner? Commissioner Wambacher votes affirmative. Commissioner Parity, how do you vote on this motion?
No.
Commissioner Parity's in the negative. I'm also in the negative. The motion fails two to one. Now, with this time and whatnot, I'd like the board to consider a motion whereby we would send correspondents to the sheriff articulating our displeasure with how this was handled. Rebecca, can you bring that up, my proposal up for the, everybody to see? While she's bringing it up, gentlemen, I'm going to move that we issue the following. Sheriff Scott Kane, this correspondence is intended to convey the Hancock County Commissioner's disappointment with how you handle the jail's recovery coaching service. Although we understand that you have the sole discretion in selecting what agency will provide each of the jail's programs, your inability to maintain a smooth and uninterrupted transition from Healthy Acacia to another provider resulted in a seven-month loss of recovery coaching. This is unacceptable, and we implore you to take the necessary time and devote the appropriate attention to your actions, especially when those decisions directly affect the individuals under your care. Additionally, we urge you to base your selection of service agencies more on their particular skill set in relation to the task, and less upon what those agencies philosophies, beliefs may be, when those beliefs don't affect the service they provide. Sincerely, the Hancock County Commissioners. Gentlemen, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion with regards to the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call a vote on the motion. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, the motion carries. I'm going to consider that this portion of the agenda is concluded, but I do want to ask Sheriff Kane.
I just have a very quick comment, that I acknowledge the message from the commissioners, and I appreciate that, and I understand it. And I also want to thank those that have been on here, both in support and opposition. You have been heard. I was criticized for leaving the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. That was because I had a personal appointment that needed to be addressed, and it was not to ignore you. I'm here today to hear that. I've heard your comments, and I appreciate that you weighed in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, with regards to public comment, is there anybody out there that would like to make a public comment regarding any other issue except, other than the sheriff? Is there a new issue that somebody would like to comment? Okay, so hearing none, we're going to conclude with the public comment section of our agenda, and we're going to move on with the agenda as we have approved. Gentlemen, motion is ordered regarding the previous minutes, the minutes of our previous meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 30th special meeting and the minutes of the February 2nd regular meeting. Ballot is presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Item four.
I'm going to move to sign the certificate recognizing victim-witness advocate Karen Brown for her 20 years of service to Hancock County, and thank her for her dedicated service.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Foster, that's your employee?
Yes, it is. Thank you. We're really excited to have Karen in our office, and she just does such a great job, and I'm just so pleased to be able to have her here today and accepting this longevity award.
Karen, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your service. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Aye.
I am myself.
I'm going to move to sign the certificate recognizing legal secretary one, Annalise Craig, for her 10 years of service to Hancock County, and thank her for her dedicated service.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Again, Matt, this is your employee?
Yes, it is. She's another integral part of our office. She is kind of the backbone of the front part of the office. She's moved up to a legal secretary recently, and she just is a wonderful asset to the Hancock County District Attorney's Office, and I'm also pleased to have her recognized by this longevity award.
And so are we. Annalise, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your 10 years of service. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Matt, item five on the agenda?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm here today to ask the commissioners to allow the District Attorney's Office to hire Michelle Potter, administrative assistant, taking over the position that Abby Dow is vacating in next month, and we're requesting that she be hired at P Level 12 C.
Rebecca, have you reviewed this request?
Yes.
Everything in order?
Yep, everything's in order.
I'm sorry, I missed that too. Did you, did you tell us that Michelle was your employee from Washington County, Matt?
Yes, she's actually VWA at the Machias Office, which is the same position that Abby left to come and take over for us here in Hancock County. So it's kind of an interesting set of events, but she's just a really great asset where she is now, and I think she's going to do a great job as the administrative assistant and also.
I think it's important, gentlemen, that we recognize that this is really a hire from within his office.
I'm going to move to hire Michelle Potter of Columbia Falls as administrative assistant at grade step 12C effective February 20th, as requested.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Matthew, anything else from your office?
No, sir, I just wanted to, Michelle is here today, and I just wanted to welcome her onboard in Hancock County. Thank you.
Abby, are you, are you short timing it? How much longer you can be around?
I am. I will be at the office until March 2nd. So I'll be, I'll be very excited to get Michelle in and start training her.
We may not see you officially because we're going to be moving them March 2nd to the ninth, so we wish you the best. Thank you for your service in Hancock County.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if nothing further with the District Attorney, we're going to move to the airport. Good morning, Leroy.
Good morning, gentlemen. I got three items. The first is a lease amendment, number three, to the main coastal flight center's operating rights. We're trying to get them a little more in line of what they're really doing. One of the things that wasn't in there that we needed to add was aircraft rental, a little hard to do flight instruction without an airplane. So we've added some services. One was the aircraft rental. We've added aircraft sales in case they want to sell an aircraft through here. Right now, they're working all of their sales that they do through their Brunswick office, which seems a little counterproductive. And airframe and power plant maintenance, they may want to do some light maintenance here at the airport. So the only other function that I've added here, or two other things, was So um the only other function that I've added here were, or two other things was the Acadia Air Tours Agreement, which is what they bought and we changed over several months ago. Uh had a seasonal percentage of gross break uh because Acadia Air Tours was only a seasonal operation. So we changed uh the percentage of gross break to be in line with the other commercial operator that operates here year round. So it's a little, just trying to standardize the agreement. And the other one that was a little deviation from the norm is in the minimum standards, it calls for 6,500 square foot of uh hangar space to do hangar aircraft storage. Well, in recognition that we need storage and the original agreement from 2009 said that they could do storage, they only have 4,500 square feet. So right now, they've, they've got five airplanes, I think, in their hangar storing, which would, we wouldn't be undercover if we didn't make some kind of adjustment to. So um my, my request is, is for the uh the commission to approve this amendment and for the approval for the chair to sign, if so, please.
I'm going to move to approve the lease amendment three with Maine Coastal Flight Center dated February 16th, 2021, uh and approve the chair signing as requested.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Leon, uh am I right that the lease goes to 2029?
Yes, it would, that was a picked over, it was basically assigned the lease from the original Acadia Air Tours. So when they bought the assets for Acadia Air Tours, uh we assigned that operating rights with those um that end date. And so they, they, they know it.
Okay. All right, no other questions for me.
All right, hearing none, nothing further, we'll act on the motion. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Item two, Leroy?
Um okay, that was a assignment of a land lease P5, uh which is owned by Dan McGraw. Uh he has sold his hangar to Robert Young of Northeast Harbor. So it's just a, a simple, let's move his land lease over to Mr. Young. And it's an approval, looking for an approval for this and the approval for the commission, uh the chair to sign.
I'm going to move to approve the land lease assignment to parcel P5 dated February uh 16th, uh yeah, February 16th as presented and requested.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Leroy, Leroy, item three.
Yeah.
Uh before we get into that, that's going to involve the discussion with regards to advice from our attorney, possible litigation. I'm uh, I'm wondering, gentlemen, if we shouldn't reserve this for an executive session while we uh decide based upon the advice of our attorney what steps we want to take in recovering this loss? And it should not be, at this time, it should not be a, a public discussion.
I would agree with that and I, I see, you know, given the alternatives, I see no reason that, that um you know, this needs to take place today. In fact, I, I would argue that it take place, you know, at the second meeting in March.
Leroy, can we, can we wait to do that then?
Oh yeah, and I, I just wanted to uh, you know, get it out there and let everybody know what, what was going on. So it really was, this is about the amount of discussion I was hoping we was going to get.
Okay, Rebecca, if you remember, we'll put this executive session to discuss the financial situation with Silver Harris on our... By the way, that's going to be the uh 23rd, gentlemen. Uh that's going to be delayed, so it's just on the March 23rd meeting, Rebecca, okay? Thank you. Leroy, anything else?
All I got.
I'm sure you're not going to be very busy today, so we'll...
No, we, we came in at four this morning, everything was slick, so we closed the airport and it's not looking much better yet, so.
Wow, no kidding. How often does that happen, you close it?
Well, it, it happens more often than you would think, you know, what, what hap, you know, it was raining when we got here this morning at four. Uh and then it turned to sleet while we was here and getting the roads sanded. Um you know, we're waiting that, you know, we're, basically, we're waiting to try and find the right opportunity to clear the sleet, the snow off and then sweep it. It's all about timing, because we, you know, we're trying to do it before and get it cleaned up before it freezes behind us, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll let you get back to it then, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Moving along with the agenda, good morning, Tim Richardson, you have issues from the jail?
Morning, just a couple of quick things. Uh request, request permission to promote Corrections Officer Blake Maury to temp full-time effective February 27th, 2021 with a curfew and second comp time?
So moved as requested.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, uh Rebecca?
Yes.
Have you weighed in on this move? I'm just curious about the uh accrual of second comp?
Yeah, that's, that's typical for someone who moves to temporary full-time.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion with regards to the motion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'm sorry, was you going to comment, John?
No, no.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries.
That's with permission to work Corrections Officer Michael Butters out of classification following the guidelines set by Article 24, Section 4 of the unit contract. He's going to be active as supervisor, filling in a supervisor vacancy that we have in the jail.
So moved as requested.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
I, Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself, motion carries. We've deleted item C, anything else, Tim?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to maintenance, Dennis, are you on this morning? Dennis, you could be very busy too. I'll remind you, gentlemen, that because of the COVID, the jail is unable to provide maintenance with trustees, leaving a lot of work to Dennis and his crew to do themselves without that help. Good morning, Dennis.
Yes, good morning.
You have some transfers you'd like us to act on?
Yes, three transfers, uh which are relative to recent action taken by the commission. The first is to uh transfer to, from G1-3011-00 to expense account 0690907, access control in the amount of $15,000. This is to add an additional four doors, uh which should by my estimation be the final step of this project as well.
Okay, gentlemen, so in plain English, what he's doing is moving money from a reserve account into an operating account is, is 90, you're...
That's the one we set for access control.
That's, that's the one we set up for access control, yep. So he can spend, spend the money out of that account, okay? We have our, have the request, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I was, I was gonna, um how about I make this motion in one fell swoop and then Dennis could explain before we vote, is that okay?
That'd be fine.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the following transfers from account G1-300-300. Uh excuse me, I got the number wrong. G1-3011-00, building Astro as requested. 15,000 to E6-90-907, access control. 47,350 to E69916, Sheriff's Office Roofing Project. And 9,900 to E69-90-917, uh jail sprinkler pipe repair.
Seconded.
I think we have a motion made and seconded. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, aren't they, Dennis? I mean, we understand.
They really are.
That 47,000 is the action, we, the result of the action we took approving that bid for the jail roof, correct?
That's right. And the last is the sprinkler pipe repair in the jail, which was a, a section of pipe, large three-inch pipe uh that carries to branches uh dry air and, and water after the bladder is breached uh up in the admin and electrical and uh PR5 area of the jail. It's in a harsh environment and it pitted out. And we've, it's gotten, I talked about it, we view that as, as infrastructure in a county building more, you know, and so feel that the justified and carrying the expense to the capital reserve account.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I just wanted to thank Dennis and Scott Atkins for the, the, the agenda notes that explained this very concisely and was very helpful, thank you.
Dennis, when, when, when are we going to, when are they planning on taking the action on the roof?
Uh well, they're taking a couple of core samples and hopefully early April is the target date. So we'll let the weather turn a bit. And uh the deadline's May 31st, so it'll be done by then, for sure, April time.
Sounds good.
I was here the other day when they were working and talking to Dennis about that and, and the wind had blown some of it clear, but it's also drifted some of the other. So I mean, there's, some places, there's no snow on the roof, other places, there's going to be probably four or five inches, isn't there, Dennis, in places?
Yeah, at least.
Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Dennis, anything else for maintenance this morning?
No, that's it, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anything else with regards to our meeting today? And then I would direct your attention to our next meeting ordinarily would have been March 2nd, but in order to accommodate some, some issues with one of the commissioners, we're going to move that to March 9th. It will be March 9th at 8:30 in the morning, that'll drive the second meeting of the month to the 23rd. So that'll be our meeting schedule for the month of March. Anything else, gentlemen?
I think that's it.
It's adjourned.
Motion made to adjourn, I hear a second.
Seconded.
All those in favor of the motion, Mr. Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, we are adjourned.